Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. This is Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in council chambers at City Hall. Before we begin today's meeting, I know that there's a few new faces up here which I would like to introduce to you. One is not a new face but a returning one, and we're delighted to have Councilmember Linda Lindholm return to the dais.
Thank you.
And we're also very excited to introduce you to our new city manager, Christine Ridge. And I'd also like to introduce you to an individual in the audience. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Matt McDaniel. Can you please stand? Lieutenant McDaniel was just recently selected to serve as our city's Chief of Police Services, and he will start this Friday. He is a 26-year law enforcement veteran who actually began his deputy career in our fine city, and we are very excited for his return and want to extend a very warm welcome. I know the city team and my fellow elected officials are excited for you to begin your new role here in Laguna Niguel, so welcome Lieutenant McDaniel. City Clerk Gomez, can you please call and roll?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Davies?
Present.
Councilmember Lindholm?
Present.
Councilmember Minigar is here in City Hall somewhere, and I'm sure he will be at his seat shortly. Mayor Protem Jennings?
Here.
And Mayor Genaway?
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Ms. Ridge, did you have something to add?
I believe Councilmember Minigar mentioned that he may have to go to the airport, so he could be missing for the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Bishop Bode Swanson from the Church of Latter-day, Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Cub Scout Pack 774 come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your God, we as members of the city of Laguna Niguel, residents here, we humbly bow our head before Thee and we give Thee thanks for this beautiful day. We give Thee thanks, Father, for the fact that we live here in this beautiful city. We give Thee thanks for this council and our city government and that it runs so smoothly and that there are checks and balances in our system and means through which the members of this city can be taken care of and that all of us can be given opportunity to pursue happiness and to live good lives. We're grateful for our families and the things in our lives that bring us happiness and joy. We ask Thee to bless this meeting tonight, that it will be blessed with a spirit of wisdom and discernment. We pray for the members here, that a spirit of hope will be here and that the government will continue to run and function properly and that all of us will receive direction in our lives as it relates to how we can contribute to this city and our good nation in general, and how we can more fully love our neighbors and be good, kind, honest, loving people. We close this prayer and we ask again that Thy Spirit would be here in this meeting and with us as we return home, and we do so humbly, and we say these things humbly, and amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout Pack 774, color guard advance.
Please place your hand over your heart. Those in Inevorn and Veterans salute. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty, justice for all. Two. Audience may be seated.
Hey, boys, and stay right there, we're coming right down. Thank you so much for being here. And can the parents of these fine Cub Scouts please stand? We'd like to acknowledge the parents. Thank you for what you do, because we know it takes a lot on the parents' part to get these boys to their meetings and all the other activities that they do to participate in Scouts, but this is a great way for character development and to make good friends and to serve your community. So we're delighted all of you are here today. So I'm going to pass the microphone. If you can please say your first name, what school you go to, and what grade you're in.
My name is Harrison Lowman. I go to Molten Elementary. I'm in fourth grade and I am 10 years old.
My name is Jacob. I go to Molten Elementary and I'm in third grade.
My name is Peyton. I go to Molten Elementary and I'm in third grade.
My name is Dylan. I go to John S. Malcolm and I'm in third grade.
My name is Gabriel and I go to Molten Elementary and I'm in third grade.
My name is Jake and I go to Bethany Lutheran School and I'm in third grade.
My name is Richard and I go to Mission Basilica School and I am in third grade.
My name is Sam. I go to Molten Elementary and I'm in third grade.
My name is Kyle. I go to Annalee Schools and I am fifth grade.
My name is Chris Connolly, and I am the Cub Master of Pack 774.
My name is Doug Hammerin, and I'm the Arrow of Light Den Leader for Pack 774.
Hey, thank you. Could I have Donna and Dennis Mulvaney come up here, please? So as we're starting off in January, I want to introduce our city to Donna and Dennis Mulvaney, who started this tradition many years ago of having the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts come to present the flag at our city council meetings. So I'd like to thank you for that, and also, how many of you boys know what a challenge coin is? Any of you know? A challenge coin is something that's traditionally been used in the military, but it's also something that has been used by presidents, vice presidents, and mayors of cities, and it represents two things. It's a bonus for doing extra work, going above and beyond, and also it shows that you belong to a group. So in Laguna Niguel, our community started with the C Country values of commitment to community and excellence in service, and we became a city because many people volunteering to work towards cityhood. So this year, we have challenge coins for extraordinary volunteers, so I'd like to present some of the first ones tonight. And I think now we have a picture opportunity, so if parents would like to come up with their cameras, and I'll scoot back here. Great job, thank you.
Color guard dismissed.
Okay, now, our first presentation this evening is recognition of our fantastic, superb parade committee. We have the funnest day of the year in Laguna Niguel. It's always the second Saturday in December, and it wouldn't be possible without the members of our parade committee. So I'd like to ask Director Giglio of Parks and Recreation to come forward and assist. Okay, Jim Taylor, the chairman, would you please come forward? Okay. He is not able to be here tonight. Patty Fahervary, the co-chair of sponsorships. No, not at all. We love seeing you, Audrey. Keith Sims, the band coordinator. Hey, we all know this guy. Dave Tuma, logistics chair. You've got to get used to a new type of... You should know this from military support. And Jessica Tuma, St. Timothy liaison. Teresa Winters, the VIP coordinator. Bring him up. Can I call him up? Huh? Okay, Beck Winters, helper extraordinaire. Come on, Beck. I know Beck from when he was General Manager of Day at Molten Niguel Water District. And TC Robinson, Traffic and Safety. We will be sure to get him his certificate. And then the following staff have gone above and beyond for this event. We know that they always do. Colleen Gelfer, Recreation Supervisor. Elizabeth Madrigal, Recreation Coordinator. And Reggie Burdian, Senior Recreational Leader. So Allison has shared some fun facts with us. In total, there were 18 committee members with an estimated 500 hours contributed overall to the event. There were 225 volunteers in attendance on Parade Day. Wow. 103 entries participated. 34 sponsors contributed a total of $5,600 in cash contributions and an estimated $39,000 of in-kind support. Our loyal platinum sponsors who contributed over $5,000 included Allen Family Automotive. Yeah, clap for all of them. Laguna Niguel and Top Hat Balloon Works. All of these businesses have supported the parade for many years, and we're grateful for their loyalty and support to the community. And we're currently looking for volunteers to serve on the parade committee. Yes, they start now. So go to the parade website at lagunanigelparade.com for more information, and it can be you up here next year. So let's give our parade committee a round of applause. So thank you so much for all you do, and I think we're going to get a picture. Good job, Beck. Okay, in the next presentation, I will ask Mayor Protem Jennings to present.
Well, it's a parade kind of night tonight, so we have something a little bit different. I want to, if I could invite up Brad Kay to come to the front. We were so blessed as a city to have a very special person this year. Brad was, I guess, elected is the right way, appointed as a judge for the Tournament of Roses Parade this year. There are only three of those, and it's chosen from an international panel, and it is a huge thing, and we are so very blessed to have Brad not only in our city but doing something so great. Brad is no stranger to public service and no stranger to creative arts. He's a principal art director for Disney. He designed their floats in '06 and 2013, and has received lifetime recognition awards from a number of entities for his contributions to the arts and other things. As a city, we don't get to do much. We don't have a whole lot to give you, but we can say thank you, and it means a lot to us, and you are one of those people that's out there on behalf of the city, and we really, really appreciate it, Brad. And so on behalf of the city council, we would like to congratulate Brad Kay for being selected to serve as a judge for the 129th Rose Parade. If you would, please join me in congratulating Brad. And he comes bearing gifts, so that's nice.
Official roses.
Ah, official roses from the Rose Parade, so that's awesome. That's great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next presentation is the announcement of the Word of the Month Art Contest winners for January 2018. So the Word of the Month contest is a project of our newly formed Arts Committee here in Laguna Niguel. We have resident volunteers who want to bring arts of all types to our residents, both visual arts and performing arts. So the Word of the Month is their first endeavor, and each month, there is a new word. How does that inspire artists? Well, you can see that outside in the lobby. But the public has been invited to come into City Hall to vote for the last week on their favorite art piece, and the categories are by age. So children are primary or secondary. Adults are 18 to 55, and 55 and over are classic. So I like classic. But thank you so much to all of the participants in this art contest. We were absolutely thrilled for the first month. The word was "new" because January is a new year. We have many new and wonderful things in our city, and we saw how our artists were inspired. For February, the word of the month is leadership. There's many ways leadership is demonstrated in our city. You've seen the scout leaders here. You see leaders on our parade committee. You see leaders in everyday life here in our city, all working to make our city a better place for all of us to live and work. It takes the volunteers coming together. And February is also the month of President's Day. But I'd like to present the certificates to the winners of the January contest, so I'd first like to congratulate the winner of the primary group with the art piece titled "New View," Brooke Rifkin. Brooke? Congratulations, that's awesome. Hey, you know what, I think someone's taken a picture. You know what, I think someone's taken a picture. You're a great artist. I can't even do that. You're a great artist. You can stay, yes, please do. And now in the adult group for new beginning, Maria Kader. And in the classic group, De Fleurs, The Flowers, Nancy Bell. All of these winners were selected by residents in our city. Residents are invited to come into City Hall and cast their ballots for their favorite pieces. So let's congratulate our winners once again. So thank you for participating and we look forward to seeing your entries in February for the Word of the Month, Leadership. So thank you. Okay, I see some shopping bags over there. Hey, and I believe Mr. Bill Lieber is here. Okay, our final presentation this evening is the announcement of the Chamber of Commerce Shop Laguna Niguel Contest winners. So Bill is going to make the presentation.
Yes, I have my script.
Okay, so I will, I will stop talking, okay? I'll let you go.
Okay, I'm Bill Lieber. I'm with, on the board of directors for the Chamber of Commerce. I'm in charge of business development, specifically Shop Laguna Niguel. This year's holiday campaign was the most successful year we've ever had. Last year, we broke the record. This year, we broke the record again because we're going on our fifth year and just keeps snowballing each year. Next year, Stephanie Winsted will be in charge of it and I'll be the liaison with city council and the chamber. I'm sure she's gonna take it even to another level. Many of the people cut out the promotions we had in the Parks and Rec brochure. They actually cut it out and brought it in with their, with their tickets, so they get two tickets. We selected visible locations to put our displays in our envelopes for people to keep their receipts. The campaign was posted at City, on the City Hall monitor and the new scrolling monitor at Crown Valley Park. Majority of the comments we got from the staff were really thought about where they're gonna spend their money. And we had several people, one was at the Home Depot in El Toro, looking for appliances, then remembered Shop Laguna. Came back to this one and did it. Another one was running low on gas, was gonna stop in Laguna Hills for gas, but went ahead and on fumes made it into Laguna Niguel to do it. My own personal experience, my wife was always asking me, "Stater Brothers, is that Laguna Niguel or Laguna Hills?" Because before she went, and she also made sure I brought home receipts. Again, this year, the chamber had made an incentive to the merchant by promoting a basket of cookies by the cookie lady, Donna B. So the, the business that got first place or that got the most votes is gonna get that basket. We asked participants to vote for the favorite Laguna Niguel business. The staff recorded over four thousand votes and over eighty-eight businesses were mentioned. The names of the winners and business can be voted for or be viewed at shopindineguel.com. Okay, here we go. So the first business and the first choice was Costco Heather Ridge. Second was Postal Annex on Aliso Creek. Third was Genalt Hardware. And then fourth was jewelry by Angelo. And then fifth was two, it's Ted's Place and Tokyo Joe's. There we go. It took the staff a lot of time and work the, at the last, at the end of the month and the first part of the new year to put all this together, but they did an excellent job with Debbie's help and Diane. The chamber also purchased gift certificates that go out to the lucky winners today's drawing. Would the Honorable Mayor Elaine Jenaway please choose the one thousand dollar winner first, the five hundred dollar winner second, and lastly, the two hundred and fifty dollar winner? Just a reminder, the contest, the contestants can only win once. So we have the...
Are we gonna get a drum roll? Hey, Jonathan, spin it. Oh, wow, there are a lot of tickets in here. And you know, shopping Laguna Niguel is important to your city. The sales tax revenue provides goods and services to our residents and also employment for our residents. So be sure to be thinking about Laguna Niguel businesses all year round. I have one or two?
You have two. There you go, you got one.
Got one, okay. Is it the Carol Allen? Well, you can only win once, so... Those of us who know Carol know that she's just a lucky person. Peggy Barron? Responsibility, Jonathan. That one or two?
That's one.
J.D. Luong? Okay, and... Thank you all for participating, all the people whose names are in this drum for participating in Shop Laguna Niguel. It really is something that's important to our city, plus I know you have fun shopping.
We're good.
You're good? Are we good? Okay, so that concludes our presentations and brings us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter, whether or not it appears on the agenda, is required to fill out a gold-colored request to speak form. These forms are available on the counter near the door. Please submit the completed form to the city clerk prior to being heard by the city council. Each member will be allowed three minutes to speak. So City Clerk Gomez, I believe I have all the forms?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we will first be taking the requests to speak that are for items other than Sun Point. Sun Point, we will take during that agenda item. So Maggie Craig, I'm not quite sure by the topic, is this regarding Sun Point or... Okay, so would you like to speak now or during Sun? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Maggie Craig. I live at 29622 Terracina here in Laguna Niguel. I bought my house thirty years ago this month and have been in Niguel Summit ever since. I am here to beg you not to increase density. This is a picture looking down on the intersection of Crown Valley and the Five Freeway on December 12th, 2016. I took this picture from my car, I'm sure that's illegal, sorry, but I felt sick to my stomach at seeing an ambulance trying to get through the intersection to Mission Hospital and it couldn't. The resolution is poor in this blow-up. The Christmas tree on the top of Mission Hospital was glowing in the background and the ambulance could not get through. The traffic was gridlocked, there was nowhere for the cars to go on the bridge. It struck horror in my heart that someone might die right there in sight of Mission Hospital with its Christmas tree. And this is before the largest new apartment tenement on Crown Valley and the freeway was even occupied, adding its hundreds of occupants and cars. On Easter of 2006, my mother-in-law collapsed in full cardiac arrest at Laguna Niguel in my home. And by the grace of God, the ambulance got through to Mission and her life was saved. Who will not get there in time? Who was in this car on December 12th? We have become a city of rapidly increasing density and just urban proportions. I believe this is a direct result of allowed density without thoughtful consequences, consideration of the fatal consequences. How much more of the world's overcrowding and housing issues will Laguna Niguel be responsible for? City government is wise to look at other cities that allowed rapid density to infiltrate with deadly outcomes. The city of Hawthorne near LAX is one example. In the 1980s, large single-family homes were rezoned and every inch of space was allowed to be apartments. Twenty-plus units, single-family homes, multiple units, twenty-plus. This happened hundreds of times. The schools were inundated as now each of these small units housed not a couple or family, but multiple and multi-generational families. The schools were severely impacted and crime soared. Robert F. Kennedy Hospital shut its doors, unable to handle the massive influx of uninsured gunshot wounds and other massive traumas. And to top it off, city governmental leaders were prosecuted and shamed when it was uncovered that they illegally owned part of the rezoned redevelopment areas.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay? Who will be in that ambulance trying to get to Mission? It was my mother-in-law once. I hope it is not Kelly Jennings. I hope it is not Neil Davies. I hope it is not Raymond or Nicole or Lauren, your children. Thank you.
Hey, next, John Ulrich and Donna Mulvaney.
Hi, John Ulrich, I'm at 30412 North Hampton. And Donna Mulvaney.
I'm Donna Mulvaney, 23862 Windmill Lane.
We wanna talk about the upcoming fundraiser, the Laguna Niguel Preserve, Botanical Preserve. I've only been involved with the preserve about a year and the progress that we've made is amazing. Thanks to so many volunteers from Socha University and different middle schools, et cetera, with the Chilean Garden and other things, it's great. But we wanted to thank the city council for all their support in the past, the dollars that have been budgeted towards this. So with all that said, we have a fundraiser on the 28th at Sea Country Senior Center. Thank you. I know Elaine is coming, she's gonna be there and talk. We'd like to invite the whole city council, all the staff and everybody in this room. It's a fun time. Last year, we had a real good time, so we'd like you to come. So Donna might have a few things about our silent auction.
Just to mention, John, that we do have a silent auction and we're getting good results again this year. We had a great result last year, but this year, we already have four tickets to Disneyland and a family pass for one week at Athletic Timeline Athletic Center. So we would really like for you all to come and participate and support us. The Eighteen Acres that's just above Crown Valley Park has been there for over thirty-five years and we're very, very proud of it, but we do need the support of the community, which we've always had and we always will have. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. Okay, the next two speakers are, have requested to speak regarding parking permits. City Attorney Dixon, is there any information?
Mayor Jenaway, I understand that there was concern that the closed session that was held at the special meeting earlier concerned permit parking and threats of litigation against the city. That was not the case, that closed session was on an entirely different matter. That may be the issue that these folks would, wanna address.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Timothy Bowman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, fellow residents. My name is Timothy Bowman. I live at 30012 White Cap in Sterling, Niguel. I'm here to speak in reference to the unresolved health, safety and blight issues caused by excessive parking on Hidden Hills Tessier and Niguel Ranch roads and the encroaching into the surrounding neighborhoods. I wish to express my disappointment on the inability of the council and the Traffic Commission to resolve these issues to date and I propose new alternative action. At the December 14th Traffic Commission meeting, two members were absent and two other members refused to take action because of perceived lack of quorum. However, at this meeting, a member of the commission noted that he himself saw the blight caused by overcrowding on the streets and told his real estate agent that he did not want to see homes in our area. Furthermore, it was noted that the occupancy rates of the apartment complexes in question here are the same as their claimed levels of twenty years ago, but I estimate the number of cars in the area has increased since about seventy-five percent in the twenty years I've lived there. I noted for the commission that the detriment of the area is such, it is now being known as Laguna Nighetto. As there is no progress in the apartment complexes or only stalling through inactivity and legal threats, I propose the following. That the council coordinate with the Traffic Commission to solve the near-term problem and immediately enact the requested permit parking in Somerset Point in Sterling, Niguel. Second, that the council place on the agenda for the next meeting a vote for a requirement that the three apartment complexes submit to the city within thirty days their solutions to reduce parking in the area to 1997 levels and upon approval, the council enact their plans ninety days thereafter. Absent inadequate solution to the apartment complexes, I request that the council accept alternative proposals from the area residents to be submitted within thirty days and to be enacted by the department, apartment complexes within ninety days after council approval. Hidden Hills and Tessier Streets have become unsafe to the point that they are no longer navigable, yet we who reside in Sterling, Niguel and the other communities have limited to no other options. Furthermore, continued unchecked blight by over occupancy departments and overcrowding on our streets is only gonna further deteriorate, much to the detriment not only of our own neighborhoods, but to our city as a whole, to the point where the damage will be irreparable.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. And the prospective new residents will seek to live elsewhere out of a desire not to be associated with a town that has a bad reputation that plagues other cities in Orange County. Time for talking has passed and we request that this, of this council, that you begin taking action with a target date for full resolution no later than June 30th, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Okay, and next is Mary Kay Helane.
Hello again, Mary Cahillane, 24871, Rigger, in Sterling-Niguel. Good evening, Mayor Genaway, Mayor Protem Jennings, and council members. I'm going to be asking you some questions, which I know you cannot answer tonight, but I hope you give some thoughtful consideration to. At the October 2017 meeting, city council meeting, city council voted unanimously to grandfather Sterling-Niguel HOA into the original parking permit program, subject to a second overnight parking survey. Thank you for that. The results of the second survey were virtually identical to the previous survey. About thirty percent of cars parked in our Sterling-Niguel neighborhood, or track HOA, are not registered to Sterling-Niguel Homes. Therefore, why hasn't Sterling-Niguel been granted their parking permits? Furthermore, why is Windridge Apartments objecting to Sterling-Niguel being granted parking permits? Recently, the city's civil engineers arranged three separate meetings with representatives from each of our master association subHOAs, including Windridge, in December, in January, and there's another one in early February, to collectively brainstorm ideas about how to solve parking issues within our master HOA. We've gotten nowhere because Windridge brings nothing to the table to alleviate the parking problems in our neighborhoods, even though they alone have caused the parking problems. It in fact seems that Windridge is trying to impede any progress. Are you aware, I know it was just stated, but I'd love to have you hear it again, that at the last Traffic Commission meeting, December 14th, one of the commissioners shared an unsettling, unsettling personal story with us about why he would never buy a house in Sterling-Niguel, specifically because of the overcrowding of parked cars in our area. For the last two years, Sterling-Niguel has been in meeting after meeting, involved in study after study. Now is the time for city council to vote Sterling-Niguel in as a parking permit district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, City Clerk Gomez, are there any other requests to speak?
No, Mayor, no other cards.
Okay, so Public Communications is now closed. Okay, and in consideration of the members of the public that are here to hear the Sunpoint item, I'd like to move that item up on the agenda if there's no objection from my colleagues. Okay, so we will move Sunpoint up on the agenda. So this agenda item is the Public Hearing for Environmental Impact Report, EIR 17-01, General Plan Amendment GPA 14-01, Zone Change ZC 14-02, Tentative Track Map TT 17433, Site Development Permit SP 12-07, and Minor Adjustment MA 15-09 Sunpoint. Community Development Director Roseberry, can you please give us the staff report? There you are. I'm used to you being over here.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the council, city council, yes, the item before you is the third request for continuance from the applicant for the Sunpoint project. We received the request on Friday afternoon that they would like additional time to work with the community, and asked for a continuance on this item. Since it is the third request for continuance, we as a staff had put in our staff report that we tabled the item, in other words, continue to a date uncertain, so we would have to renotice the project as we did for this, for the original hearing date, through mailings and noticing and such, simply because it seems as though the applicant isn't quite ready. And we feel that it would probably be more beneficial to the community to have an actual date certain, if the applicant could let us know, yeah, now we're ready, and we could then set the date and actually have the hearing date. So that kind of explains the recommendation that we had placed in front of you. So we hold that recommendation. We do have additional correspondence from the applicant that I believe you received also today, where they object to the date uncertain, but we are confident that we are able to do that. So we continue on with that recommendation, and also ask if there's any other direction that the council would like to give us.
Okay, thank you. So we're dividing this into two items. One is to discuss the proposed action, which has been proposed by staff to table the item, and then after that, if there are any comments regarding the project. So this is the same item that the developer had requested be on the November 21st agenda, correct?
That is correct. Checking my notes, but it was noticed originally in November, and then moved to December, and then continued again until this evening.
Okay, so this has been continued a couple of times, and my preference would be to table it as staff has recommended, rather than continue. It's a matter of semantics, but I would prefer to table it, then when the developer tells us they are ready, then we come back and put it on an agenda with a minimum of ten days' notice to the public, and go through the notification process again. But, because every time this gets put on the agenda, it's a cost to our taxpayers. It's staff time to put on the agenda, and then to take it off with all the staff time. So are there any other comments on the proposed action of tabling?
I had one question for the city attorney. I am in receipt of the letter from the attorney for the applicant, which is the first I'm seeing of it tonight as I'm sitting on the dais, but it makes the proposition that the city's municipal code provides that an appeal can be continued to a date certain, but not tabled indefinitely inside Section 9-1-112.2F6 of the municipal code. I'm good on the municipal code, I'm not that quick. I would ask our city attorney if you find there to be merit in that, or have you had a chance to look at it?
Councilmember Jennings, we've looked at that issue, and we believe that the particular matter can be tabled. We don't believe that that prohibits the proposal from staff.
I appreciate that. So with that, you know, my comment would be that this has been back several times. I want the citizens to know that I hear you, and that I have appreciated the comments, some good and bad, by the way. I'm not sure why there's bad yet, but I keep getting them. But I want to let you know that I hear you from the applicant, I hear you as well. I've met with all of you on multiple occasions, and I've invited any more meetings that need to come, and I will continue to do that. So with that, I don't think we should keep continuing this. I think it needs to be set down. If there's more resolution to be done, then they can back up, take a look at it, engage the community in whatever way they think is necessary to approve that, if possible, and if not, then you have your answer. But I would, I'd support the motion of tabling. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Lindholm.
I'm going to borrow Lori's mic. Evidently, my mic doesn't work. Maybe that's what they do to new people. On this issue, I agree with the tabling. It's very critical to me for the residents that it's not continued to unknown times. That is not fair. When you come here to speak, you need to know it's going to be on the agenda, and when it's going to be on the agenda. The notices need to go out to the residents, and I believe we could even keep a list of those people who are interested. My question to the staff would be, what is the time period for noticing for the residents? When is it mailed? When is it received? So I would like to know for their benefit when they can get this information.
Your mic. City Manager Ridge, your microphone, please.
Maybe it is the new people. By law, the notice would have to proceed the hearing by ten days, but I will refer to Leslie to give information on the specifics of how they notice.
Okay, and the question on that is, is that mailed ten days? Or, I would like to know, so they're going to get it five days, five business days? I mean, very specific, for the people who live in this neighborhood, what the tabling procedure is.
Okay, I'm going to refer to Leslie, where she can tell you how the notices are posted in the media, as well as distributed to the residents.
I'm actually going to have Jonathan, Jonathan is the, Jonathan Orjuna is the project manager for the city for Sunpoint, so I'm going to have him go through the noticing that was conducted originally for this meeting, and we would do the exact same thing, so I'll have him go through those details.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This project originally included notification in the paper, and we make sure to publish that notice a minimum of ten days before the hearing date. We also send out hard copy notices of the hearing to all property owners within three hundred feet of the property and any interested parties. So we will be doing the same thing. Now that notice is required to go out a minimum of ten days before the hearing. In this case, we will be sending that notice out as soon as we nail down that date with the applicant, so approximately three weeks ahead of time. The residents will be receiving-
Are you talking business days or calendar days?
Calendar days. So approximately twenty, twenty-one days before the public hearing, hard copy notices will go out to interested parties and property owners within three hundred feet.
Did you put them in the mail twenty-one days prior, calendar days?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're saying you do, or you would? Do we need to take action for the twenty-one day notice?
If the item is tabled, we will provide notice in the paper, and we will send out the hard copy notices as explained.
Twenty-one days?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And can people add their names to that list of interest?
Absolutely, yes.
So they could give that name to you or to the city clerk?
I believe if they give their name to the city clerk this evening, we will make sure to include them on our notification list, if they are not already on the list, yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions on tabling this?
If I may, thank you. When I received that email on Friday in regards to the developer meeting up with the master HOA, and that it looked like they may have come to some type of agreement, my first concern was, do the residents, are they aware of this agreement? Because I'm on my HOA, and I know that. Nobody really comes to our meetings, nobody reads the newsletters, so really, you don't know what's going on until you actually find, see action, and then that happens. So to me, it was a priority that every resident had an opportunity to see what they are deciding on, and have an opportunity. So I really, truly know, we know, when you come here, are you for this or are you against this? I don't want to just say, great, they came to a negotiation deal. You're the ones that have the voice, you're the ones that matter. Also, I'm glad that we're tabling it. I'm somewhat frustrated as much as you are at this time, it's not fair, your time is precious. I know you guys have worked very hard to get a grassroots group going here, and you know, when you have a Tuesday, you have work, you have families, you take the time out to put this on the calendar. So I completely respect that. I do want to have this table, but I want to make it clear to staff and the developer, the next time this comes to our agenda, I want to vote. I don't want it going any further, it's time to be done. Thank you.
Okay, so the item we're discussing is to table this motion, which means that we are going to wait for the developer to come back to us and say that they are ready for this to be on the agenda, and then it will go on the agenda with twenty-one day notice, and then it will not be continued any further. So the requests to speak that I have, I believe are all on the project itself. Are there any gold slips that someone has turned in that is for the motion to table this item? Okay, seeing none?
There's, there's a comment.
Oh, okay, you would like to speak on tabling the item? Okay, Mr. Burson?
Yeah, I know, I was going to say, and the first name too, Luke.
My name's Luke Burson, I live at 25646 La Sima, Laguna Niguel, in the community that's actually above the proposed Sunpoint development. Most of us tonight were here to speak on tabling, and so I think we can probably save you a lot of time, because if you're going, it sounds kind of unanimous with Fred not being here, but I don't think he could have voted on this anyway, that that's what we are in favor of. And Mayor, you're astute. The last time, or one of the times they asked for continuance, is they tried to move it to the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and my only reaction to that was, is most people wouldn't be here. And now to get this at the eleventh hour, I won't beat the drum too far. Thank you very much. I can get you, the people to raise their hands that are in favor of tabling it, and we'll save you a lot of time. So who wants to table it? Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Is there anyone else who submitted a gold slip that wants to speak on tabling? Ms. Gray. See, I know your name too. But it's a good thing.
I had a, oh, excuse me. Mayor Genaway, Mayor Protem Jennings, council members, city staff, neighbors, and friends. I have a prepared speech, but now that the vote has already been taken, it's really not necessary.
No, the vote was taken out there, but it hasn't been taken here yet.
Your discussion-
We need to hear public comments before we can vote.
Okay, so your discussion leads me to believe that it's in favor of tabling, I'm sorry. So as you can see by this evening's crowd, there's still plenty of interest in Sunpoint and the future of our community. We will continue to rally and do what it takes to keep our community safe. We are a movement of passionate homeowners that love our community and our quality of life. And while I don't dislike David Shaeer, Charlie Mallon, they're both very nice gentlemen, I do hate what they're trying to do to the community that I love. I thank you for your time, and the amount of time that you spent this weekend, or the previous weekends, looking at all of the massive boxes of Sunpoint material, and I hope you will indeed vote in favor of tabling the Sunpoint issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Okay, are there any other gold slips submitted for tabling the item? And what is your name? Have you submitted a gold slip? Okay, I found it.
I live at 25831 Avatar, in Laguna Niguel, in the neighborhood adjacent to the Sun Development. I just wanted to make sure I was on record, my husband and I would strongly support you tabling this, because for the same reason I'm on here tonight, missing my son's wrestling match, and each time we've come, we've had to give up something to be here, and we just want to have a chance to actually hear a vote. And so thank you very much, I hope that you're going to table it. It sounds like you are, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other gold slips, specifically Mr. Gall? See, I know your name too.
Robert Gall, 25922, Pasifino. Mayor Genaway, Lori, John Mark, Linda. Over the past two months, we've been through a flurry of meetings with all kinds of city people, and the developer off and on, and the people in our neighborhood, and I got to tell you, after going through those meetings and trying to weed through all the details of this particular project, and people's biases, and what's real and what's not, I got to tell you, you guys don't get paid enough. It really is impressive that you do what you do with the time that you have and the budget you have, because I'm not an expert by any means, and I don't know if any of you are experts in the particular fields of what is going on in this city and the development. I know that Jonathan and John Morgan are doing a fantastic job, but the hard part is, is they're given facts to present, and it's hard to know what reality is until you dig below the surface. So I just want to say, as a member of Laguna Niguel, I didn't understand the politics behind the scenes, and I think you can look at politics and be very skeptical, but as to what we've seen, and I know Fred's not here, but we've seen the good rise above the bad. And as much as there may be decisions that are made that aren't the smartest decisions at the start, they usually do come clean. So I just want to say, as a member of Laguna Niguel, I appreciate what you're doing as gatekeepers, because it is very valuable to keep the weeds out of the yard. And so we've learned a lot over the past two months. I may not recognize my kids by their first name anymore, and I've spent a lot of time- I may not recognize my kids by their first name anymore, and I've spent a lot of time with the dog, but we've learned a lot, and I hope that by tabling this, we get really to the bare bones of what's going on here, so that you guys have all the facts you need to make a very smart decision, because obviously Laguna Nigal, and, and that's one of the reasons that Christine or Christian, sorry, it's always one of the hard names for me, special buzz, but that's one of the reasons she's here, because she knows that this city is built on a foundation that is very rock solid, that people around the world would love to have. And so I just look forward to continuing that and seeing what we can do to get to the bottom of what's going on with Sunpoint. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gall. Okay, any other requests to speak specifically on tabling the item? Councilmember Lindholm?
My mic works, yes. I, I just wanted to let the residents know, I'm, I'm a new member, and they've been, I've had the developer try to contact me, and I've had the residents try and contact me. It's a very busy time of year. But I did spend two hours with our city staff reviewing the plans, and I have read all your correspondence. It's very thoughtful correspondence, it's very well-written correspondence. So I just wanted to share that with you in terms of, I'm not meeting with the developer, I'm not meeting with the homeowners, I'm very familiar with this area from being here for many years, so I'm, I'm happy with this motion you're making tonight.
Thank you. And who is making the motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Second it. Okay, it's been moved and by councilmember Lindholm, seconded by councilmember Davies too, and let's get the specific wording. To table the public hearing. City Attorney Dixon, do I need to read the whole item?
No, you do not, just move the recommended action.
Okay, so we'll move the recommend, recommended action, but we also, in there, when we discussed it, we said a 21-day notice.
Correct.
And the staff report refers to a 10-day notice. So we'd like the 21-day notice included in the motion. Any questions on the motion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, now, are there any other public comments for the project itself? And you have a gold slip filled out? And what is your name, sir? Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Howard Kelly, 28781, Avanita Del Caballo. We've heard lots of things tonight already about this project with overcrowding, parking issues, all those things that are going to affect the people that live in the immediate area where this development is coming. I know you've tabled it for now, and I thank you for that, I think that's great. Just a couple things that I want to make sure you know, that we have found out through our years of going through this with this developer. This developer has never built a project like this. Nothing that he's ever done in his history has ever been a track this big. He wants to do his first big project on an area of property that for 60 years, this area has said is unbuildable. First, the original developer, the next one that came along, then Home Depot wanted to build there. Obviously, there's something wrong with that ground. Do we want to trust that project to someone who's never done a project like this before? I would just like you to keep that thought in your head as we approach all the discovery on this. Thank you.
Okay, and is there anyone else who turned in a gold slip that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none. Public comments for this item is closed. Okay, we'll now move to our consent calendar, items one through 11. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comment or discussion?
I'd like to pull 10, please, for comment.
I'm going to abstain on item number three.
And I'm, Madam Mayor, I'm required to abstain on item number seven. One of the proposed traffic signals is within 500 feet of my home, and I didn't want to cast a vote on that, so. Other than that, I would move the balance of the consent item.
Second it. Okay, so items one through nine, and item 11. Item number 10 has been pulled, so we have the balance of the consent calendar with councilmember Lindholm abstaining on item number three, and Mayor Protem Jennings abstaining on item number seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, carries. Okay, item number 10, councilmember Davies.
Thank you. This, this item is in regards to proposed entry monument sign, decorative elements, and one of the concerns of the public was that the signage was going to be too large, so I was grateful that we went out to the public for comment, gave them two different sizes to comment on, and it looks like they prefer to have the smaller one, which is eight by six, and I, I agree with that. Also, by going with that, we would be saving the city $26,000, so I just want to make a comment, and that's so they know that this is also beneficial financially, and I think we're hearing the public as well. With that, I'd like to move this item.
Hey, any other comment on the item? I would just like to comment that, thank you to all the residents who participated in the survey. You said you wanted to have some input, take a look at the sizes. We asked you to go out there and take a look, and you did, and you gave us some very valuable input, so thank you for participating in that. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
So it's been moved by councilmember Davies, seconded by Mayor Protem Jennings, to approve consent calendar item number 10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, motion carries. I've got too many pieces of paper up here, excuse me. Okay, now we are on to city council agenda item number one, and this is the filling of the vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission. City Clerk Gomez, can you please provide a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Effective, over the past few weeks, we received notification from Allison Giglio that immediately Mike Churchill was resigning from his position on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We, the most recent recruitment we had was in January, earlier this, of 2017. He was appointed then on January 13th to serve a term through December 31st of 2018. The most recent recruitment was done November 27th and 28th, when appointments were made, and there was a new list of applicants. Once the appointments were made, there was a list that we continue to hold on to for two years, that had new applicants that were interested in Parks and Recreation Commission. Not new applicants, but they were individuals that were not appointed. So we created the list, we notified all of those individuals that were on the list, and two individuals decided that they did not want to have their name considered, but the list that you have before you is the list of those that would still be, like to be considered to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And in your red folder is a spreadsheet with all the applications for those individuals, and it is up to your discretion of the council to make an appointment, if you like, and also if you want to make an appointment this evening. I'm not sure which individuals are present, but I was told that they were invited to come to the meeting, so.
Okay, so we have three options, to appoint someone whose name is on the list, to conduct a new recruitment for this position, or to leave the position vacant. Until the next round of city.
Yes, and that next recruitment will be around October of 2018 this year.
Okay. You just-
I have a quick question. When is the next Parks and Rec meeting? Thank you.
Okay, what is the, no, we don't have any public comments regarding it, that's it? Do we have a nomination? Do we want to leave it open? Do we want to bring it back on February 6th?
I'll, I'll jump in here. When we did these interviews, when you do the interviews, they're fresh, they're in your mind right there. I think that was the toughest part, is when you're done, your notes go, and, and you're done with that decision. And so looking at all of this, it's just, for me, this is, these are important decisions we make, I wouldn't mind opening it up again, so I have the opportunity, and we do have a new council member, to actually hear the fresh, hear the interviews, and so we can make a decision from there, going back, because I know that we didn't keep any of the notes, because that's usually gone after we do the commissions, I would actually like to open this up again, where we could have one day to interview for this position.
Okay, well, I keep my notes for this very reason, but I don't know if the other council members have done that, so.
I suspect councilmember Lindum doesn't have her notes.
That's right, oh, that's right, you weren't there.
I, I did not keep my notes for that reason as well, but I, you know, I, I know several of the people on the list, and I have very favorable opinions of all of them. I don't have fresh in my mind the others on the list, and I would hate to make a decision not knowing, to be honest, and I, I want to be fair, this is a very important one. Parks and Rec is, I said it the other night, at one of the liaisons to the Parks and Rec Committee and I, or Commission, and I, I really think it's one of the most important commissions we have. It's, it's everyone's favorite part of Laguna Nigal is our outdoor spaces and their ability to interact with the city in that way, and I, you know, this will be fairly important, they've got some very interesting things coming up, and I know it's a little bit of effort on our part, but, and I would appreciate the applicant's effort as well, but I wouldn't mind just sitting down one more time, perhaps.
They have a pretty large task in front of them. I know at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, was it a week ago?
Yeah.
That they had a list of 21 items to prioritize, and some of those items, they would be breaking into several projects, and they need to prioritize that, then to make their recommendation to the city council for our annual budget process. So it is a very important commission, and what they do, basically, that is how most residents come into contact with the city, is what is done in that department. If we were to do a new recruitment, is there a minimum amount of time that we need to have the application period open, and what is the timeline for this?
We usually leave the period open, I guess a minimum of 30 days, to give sufficient time to post on, we post it on the city website, we usually prepare a publication to be published in the newspaper, and sometimes we even call people that have expressed an interest before. But if we did do a recruitment, we could be finished probably by March.
I, one question, this would be an appointment to fulfill the rest of Commissioner Churchill's term.
Through 2018, yes.
Okay.
Just through the end of the year.
Yeah, so we're going to be appointing the position again come November, after the October recruitment period. My, my thought would be that we don't go through that extensive a process, we could leave it open for five days or seven days, five business days perhaps, and then close it. And we already have an applicant pool, and I see several of you all here tonight, and I really appreciate your presence, and I would encourage those people to, I don't think they should be required to reapply, we've got their applications, they should just tell us if they want to. And so we could leave it open for the next five days, and, and hopefully get something in place before that next meeting.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we consider those who have indicated that they would like to have the position, the ones who interviewed back in November, that they are the applicant pool, plus we open applications for five days for anyone else in the community who would like to apply, and then after that five days, then we re-interview?
That's perfect, yeah, that's, that's it.
Is that, is that agreeable to the council, that the consensus?
Yes, that was fine, I was just, because I wasn't here for the interview, so I was waiting to see if you nominated somebody, and, and that would have been acceptable to me, so I'm, I'm happy to see you go forward this way, and I agree with you, Mayor Protem Jennings, about the five-day notification, I assume that's five business days?
It is, yeah.
So that's, that's a good plan.
So that'll bring us to the middle of next week, and then, so we'll need to get our calendars together, together to set up that interview date.
We'll start on that tomorrow.
Okay, city attorney Dixon, do we need to have a motion for that?
I, I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and have a motion to restate the consensus of the council.
Who would like to make that motion?
I'd be happy to restate the motion, that we, don't need to restate all that, because I will, that we post a five-day, a five-business-day notification for new applicants, that the applicant pool that currently exists, that previously applied, need not reapply, but the city will reach out to them to ensure that they want to remain on the list. After that's closed, we will set a date for interviews, and we will confer then. And I think that we have, if understood correctly, we have sufficient time to notice that special meeting as well for the interviews. So that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, carries. Okay, city council, item number two. City Clerk Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor, sorry, my pages were stuck together. This is, actually has to do with the mayor's appointments. You, just recently at our last city council meeting, there were appointments made to various city commissions, regional agencies, and at that time, there was a discussion about possibly having a new council member come on board, and that if there was an appointment made, that it was possible some of the assignments would be given to that new council member. And since they are the mayor's appointments, you have recommended the replacement of the current alternate board member on the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency Board of Directors, and the council liaison to the Senior Citizens Committee, which both are being served by councilmember Davies, and that you are requesting that Linda Lindholm replacer on those committees.
Yes. Well, I think we need to vote on that, since we voted on the original appointments. So is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Just a quick note, are you going to be taking over senior come June due to your schedule? I just want to make sure that's specified, if we need to.
The, the senior committee will be changing its meeting date.
Oh, okay, so it works, okay, great.
Yeah, if it's on Wednesday, I can't do that, that particular Wednesday. And just, just so you know, I also chaired the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor, I think, two or three times, so I can be an alternate very well, I hope.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
I'm making a motion approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. Okay, now on to business, other business and council reports. So under the ad hoc committee reports, no report from any of the ad hoc committees, but just to let the council, my council colleagues know that the ad hoc economic development committee will be meeting, is it next Monday? Yes, we will be meeting next Monday. Okay, and now on to council reports. Who would like to go first?
Okay, I'm, no, I'm going to be very short. That makes it really easy for me. I, I just want to say thank you to my fellow council members, it's just a delight to be serving with you. I, I know you, your hearts and souls are with the city, and that's, that's what we're here to do, is to serve the residents of the city. It's great to be here with our new city manager and back with, with many of the people. The only thing I would like to say is, I hope, I've been seeing more restaurants that are, that are closing, and I'm hoping we have somebody, either on staff, or somehow we can reach out and, and fill those, because I'd love to, maybe we can have something on the web that says, this is the square footage of TGI Fridays, or this is the square footage of Mimi's Cafe, and somebody actively seeking to fill those restaurants, because that'd be really terrific. So that's all.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. I, I echo that, and I will tell you that for that very reason, we formed the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee to do that very reach out. So that, it's in its several month early phase, but we've had some very productive meetings, we've got another one coming up. Mayor Genoay put together an agenda for that, which is, I would call aggressive and-
Robust.
And robust, and it's one that, that we are going to spend considerable time, not only filling restaurants, but, but long-term planning. I mean, we want 2018 to be a great year, but I also want 2118 to be an even better year. So we're really trying to look forward. Who is our city? Who is our city? Who can we reach out to? I had a lovely discussion, very, very, very beneficial talk with our new city manager, Christine Ridge, who had some great ideas on that, and I really welcome her input on it, and having developed a few places around Orange County in her career, I think that's going to be beneficial. So, I really look forward to that. So, that's coming up this Monday. I would invite the public, if you have comments on that, or you want something done, please reach out to either myself, or Mayor Genaway, or anyone on the council or the city, and make sure that that gets directed to us, because I've been reading your online comments and, and listening to them very carefully, and there are a lot of great ideas, and we are taking them to heart. Speaking of 2018, I am, for lack of a better word, glad to have 2017 in my rearview mirror. I was looking, for lots of reasons, to not want to like that year, and I'll be honest with you, to say that I went back and counted as several blessings, and learned that at the end of the year, that life was good, we learned a lot of lessons, our city is in great shape, we are poised for a very active and beneficial future with the people that sit on this dais, and our staff, and our neighbors, and I'm really looking forward to 2018. We have done, in that year of what I might call turmoil, we have done a lot of work on your behalf. We have new parks, new streets, new developments, we have, we have put moratoriums on congregate living, we have, we have put limits on, on short-term housing rentals, and it's, it's been a very, very busy year, and I think the city will be better for it. So, I look forward to that. I know that every ship needs a helm, and I know that, that our new city manager will be very good at that job. I welcome you to your first meeting, thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you've done, and I appreciate you jumped in very quickly, and I appreciate that. And it really is something that we repeat all the time, but our biggest goal as a city council is to do everything that we can to ensure the safety of our citizens. Nothing is more important. And that safety comes in many forms, financial security, but really, we think about public safety. We spend over $13 million a year of taxpayer monies on our police services specifically for the idea that when you lay your head down at night, that you are a little bit more safe than you might otherwise have been, that when you drive down our streets, that you have a good understanding that somebody's there to back you up. And I promise you, it's a truth, and Lieutenant McDaniel, I want to specifically say thank you, welcome home, sir, welcome back, and we are very excited for all you did. You are stepping into shoes that, that I'm not sure I'd want to step into. You know, Chief Barr was, Chief Barr was really good, and, and we were a very big fan of his, and, and I know that he is a supporter of yours, and I'm very proud to have you here, sir, and I really look forward to all you do. You have a city council prepared to help you, and I look forward to working with you. And to our city staff, you guys, you guys had a big year last year, you really went through it, it was a lot. I want to say thank you to you, this is our first year, let's turn a page, and I appreciate all you do. I see it day after day after day, and it means a lot. So, Steve, thank you so much for all you did in stepping up last year. It must be awesome to be Finance Director again. I see the smile on your face, and Debbie, I appreciate all that you've done, and backing up Steve and staying on as interim Assistant City Manager. So, thank you very much. Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had a little bit of a break, so it's been enjoyable, not a lot of meetings, actually more fun items. We did have though a park, our park, Crown Valley Park Tier Three meeting, where we had our city managers, as well as the mayor, who will be on the ad hoc committee as well. It's very exciting, the community building is moving fast, they got a chance to see all the updates and where we're going, I think, pretty soon. Were we talking March? I think that it would be brought to the council. So, we're moving quickly, and we're hoping to break ground in a few months, but this community building is going to be one of a kind. It's going to be something that we can all be very proud of, and I'm excited for, for it to move forward. And Councilmember Lynn Home really is kind of the mothership that got this moving, 16 years trying to get the improvements at the park, and, and really worked hard, so if it wasn't for you, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation right now, so thank you very much. And then, real quick, we did have our pickleball ribbon cutting. Congratulations to the pickleball group, they've worked very hard to get this moving. We now have it over at the regional park, it's beautiful, I believe there's four, right? Four courts over there, if you get a chance, check it out, they'll be doing tournaments, but very proud, want to thank the county as well for stepping in and making this happen. Couple of other items, but I'll let the mayor finish up with them, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Davies, and thank you to our incredible staff. I just can't, you know, sing your praises enough. Each and every one of you are very valuable to this city, and you provide a lot of input, insight, and I know you are so dedicated to what we do in delivering the services and the amenities to our residents. But I am just absolutely delighted that City Manager Ridge is with us, I've met with her several times, and she knows a lot. Very, very knowledgeable, bringing some great ideas to our city, and her experience at her prior city is very beneficial for us here in Laguna Niguel. And we are absolutely delighted that Lieutenant McDaniel will be joining us, and look forward to working with you, sir. Thank you. So, I attended Lieutenant Barr's retirement dinner that the Orange County Sheriff's Department held for him, and he got, you know, there was a little bit of roasting going on, but it was a lot of fun, and it was honor that he was very, very deserving of. Councilmember Davies and I had the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee interviews to select a few new members for that committee. That committee is different than most of the others for our city, because that's a working committee. They're not an advisory body, they actually do the work and carry out the projects, but they allow all of us in Laguna Niguel to show our support for our adopted military units. On January 9th was the Laguna Niguel Junior Civic Workshop. Chief Adams was to be the speaker there, he is our fire chief, but he and 29 of the firefighters from OCFA went up to Santa Barbara to help there. So, but he did send Chief Fettick to take his place, but just be aware that, you know, when there is a natural disaster, or any kind of a disaster anywhere, that our deputies and our firefighters do go to other areas, and the same would happen if something were to happen here, we would see them coming in from other areas. So, there is a lot of mutual aid that takes place. I won't go into the Tier Three Crown Valley Park Ad Hoc Committee meeting, because Councilmember Davies already talked about it, but I'll just tell you, you're going to love it. The new building, you are absolutely going to love it, I can't wait. Some upcoming events, so we have some new things that we're, we're doing in the city. We're doing the Word of the Month Art Contest, and as I told you, February, the word of the month is leadership. We have President's Day. In February, I'll also be having a leadership breakfast with the presidents and board members of many of the different organizations in our city, for them to provide some input to us, because we, we listen to our residents. And on January 18th, I'm going to let Sergeant Songer tell you who he's going to have pizza with, but after that, will be a human trafficking workshop here at City Hall at 7:00 P.M. January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and the residents of Laguna Niguel are doing a lot of work on that front, raising awareness and volunteering, and the workshop, you'll be able to find out about volunteer activities and how you can help with this. On January 28th is the Celebrate the Preserve fundraiser for the Niguel Botanical Preserve, and then on January 30th, we're going to have a city open house. This is the people's house, you know, the White House is the people's house in DC, this is the people's house in Laguna Niguel. So, we're inviting all the residents to come, take a look at their city hall, meet their, the directors, and also have a welcome reception for City Manager Ridge and Chief McDaniel. And that is all that I have, and I'll let Sergeant Songer take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of Laguna Niguel Police Services, I'd like to again thank you for all the support, the council's support, and the support for public safety, and the support for the safety of the citizens. And with that in mind, real fast, I'd like to talk about the, we had a DUI checkpoint last Friday. It was on Crown Valley Parkway, west of Greenfield, on the 12th. We had 959 cars go through the checkpoint, two people were arrested for DUI, nine people were arrested for unlicensed driver, and 30 other people received citations, and it was the first checkpoint in the city, and in February, we're going to have, the DUI Task Force is going to drive around, and the roving patrols, and again, all this is covered under the OTS grant, so we don't have to spend any money on that. On Sunday, January 28th, we're going to have the Laguna Niguel Triathlon. Parks and Recs and us are going to probably be blocking off streets, Crown Valley and La Paz, at about 6:00 a.m. Hopefully, we'll have the roads all reopened again by about 11:00 a.m., but slow down, watch for the flashing red lights, watch for the traffic control, there's going to be hopefully 800 to 1,000 people participating in the event. And last but not least, on Thursday, if you're a high school student, we're going to have Pizza with Police at Blaze Pizza, near the intersection of La Paz and Pacific Park, it's going to go on from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. We've reached out to, not only to the youth committee who have advertised this, and they have spoken to their high schools of Elise Niguel High School and Dana Hills High School, but now Capa Valley High School has caught wind, so we're going to have students coming from there. So, we hope to see any high school students that ever wanted to ask a police officer any question, I know some of us are big ogres, but we're friendly guys that like to talk, so if they have any questions, feel free to attend, and we hope to see everybody there. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Sergeant. Director of Finance, Earl Enson? You go last. City Attorney Dixon? Director Roseberry? Community Engagement Manager, North? Okay, Planning Manager, Dunya? City Clerk Gomez?
I don't have anything to report, but I wanted to say welcome to Christine, it's nice to see you sitting across from us now, your first meeting, and also, I, because it's after the holidays, we haven't really had a chance to talk about it, but I really enjoyed the holidays around Laguna Niguel this year, I got to see the lights and everything, it was the first time I really had a chance to really go around, I know neighborhoods now, and I just want to say I'm very, very proud to be a resident here and work for Laguna Niguel, so thank you.
Director Giglia, one of the ones who provides a lot of that holiday fun.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. There's going to be an informative workshop, internet safety, for sixth to eighth graders on Thursday, January 25th, that's presented by the Police Services Crime Prevention Team at 7:00 P.M. Registration is required for that. Registration for the First Annual Laguna Niguel Senior Games is going to begin on January 22nd, non-residents on February 5th, and registration is free for residents and $10 for non-residents. The games are going to kick off with an opening ceremony on March 9th, and the games will be on March 10th and 11th, and featured sports are pickleball, bocce ball, table tennis, swimming, soccer, and billiards. There's going to be more information available on the City of Laguna Niguel website, cityoflagunanigel.org, and don't forget to participate in the Parks and Recreation Instagram contest, you can submit a photo of you living well in Laguna Niguel, and upload it to @LNRec, and share it, and winners are announced every Friday. And I'd also like to welcome Lieutenant McDaniel, thank you for being here, and welcome boss, Christine Ridge, we're happy to have you here. Thank you.
Interim Assistant City Manager, Bell?
I just wanted to share with the council real quickly that I received a call from one of the participants in the art contest, who wanted me to express her thanks to the council for starting this, that she thought it was very fun, and she was really glad that the council was interested in the arts and in inviting the community to participate as well, and I will share that the phone call that I received was actually from someone that I had to tell wasn't a winner tonight, but she wasn't discouraged at all, and she was just really pleased that the city had thought of doing that, and she was very complimentary about the program, and hopes that it will be well-participated in in the future. And I encouraged her to resubmit, I told her every month, there's a new competition, and you never know what will be on display, so, but I wanted to pass along her thanks to you.
Great, thanks for sharing that, and also thanks for all your assistance in implementing it. Thank you. Mr. Ms. Booty?
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm happy to announce that we received the notification that we received Project Park of the Year Award from the American Society of Civil Engineers in Orange County for our Crown Valley Park Tier Two project. As you know, we also received an award from the American Public Works Association for the same project, so we're very happy to report that.
That's great, congratulations, that's great. I know a lot of hard work takes place in your department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Manager Ridge?
Now I get to speak. Well, first of all, I want to thank the city council and the staff and the community. It has been an incredible two weeks, tomorrow will mark two weeks on the job, and everybody has been so kind and welcoming, so thank you for that. And I just have two items, the first one, Ziad, already covered, but I wanted to do a shout-out to both our Public Works Department and our Community Services Department. It was Project of the Year, it was quite an honor from the American Society of Civil Engineers, and they'll be receiving an award on February 15th, so congratulations. Secondly, I wanted to provide a brief update regarding recent steps taken by the FAA concerning flights into and out of John Wayne Airport. As you're aware, last March, the FAA changed flight patterns, which generated concerns from many residents in South Orange County. As a result, select cities and the county filed lawsuits over increased noise and pollution. Just recently, there has been a tentative settlement reached in the Newport Beach lawsuit, that if approved by the FAA and the Department of Justice, could alleviate some of the noise and pollution concerns. But since the settlement agreement has not been made public, and is still subject to approval by the FAA and the U.S. Department of Justice, it's unclear how the negotiated changes will impact communities south of Newport Beach. So, we're going to continue to monitor the issue, and we certainly will report back to you with any additional details as they emerge, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.